Why they can't? There's no reason they can't.
Right, that's what we've wanted to. Yeah, I wish they would, but I didn't. We don't have nothing to do with that, right?
Right.
Good. My bridge is there.
Right, but I mean, that's, that's theirs to do with what they want.
Yeah. Cause I don't know, does that dump into the grid in a pipe? Or is it?
I think it's open.
I've never been on that.
It's too big, I think, for a pipe.
Well, we always back up the water on its bridge in winter. I started on the concrete.
Well, hopefully it gets cleaned out this fall and what it's supposed to.
Pretty good.
They won't be there then, they'll get knocked out of there.
Yeah.
Not all the way back, almost.
Sure. That's all Sarah and Ashley do. He's in a laboring like nobody had noticed in there. But. Taking part in part. So he was cheap like a month or a lot.
Yeah. You seem to.
It's one of those duties as a son.
Yeah. As a son.
Yep.
We have some damage to, uh, one of laterals too, but I did, this looked like a pretty busy meeting, so. I have that on the agenda next week for the whole of signage.
Oh, hold another.
It ain't good.
Ready when you are, buddy. Okay. So it's nine AM and I'll call the meeting to order. Like regions. Montler, Craylow.
Here.
Smith. Here. Teasy.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Any conflicts of interest? Bring that, Michelle, if you want to.
Move to approve with the addition of, uh, provisional budget.
An option of provisional budget, yes.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Actually, there is. But two sets of minutes before us. Is there a motion to approve? This would be July eleventh, July fourteenth.
Want to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve minutes of eleven fourteen of July. All those say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion here it's. Any visitors to be heard? On Soren's.
It's the Shakespeare time, I'll, I'll say the, the soul of wit is brevity. And so I'll try to be brief. I guess you've talked about this, at least some of you have, or maybe all of you have, I don't know. This is about Discovery Avenue, which is a gravel road that runs between the two highways fifty, which actually the south one is now, I suppose Cherry Street, but I don't know what the county calls it. The city calls Highway fifty now what we used to call the bypass, and there's a short road uh, between those two, uh, concrete highways. Discovery Avenue, and it, and it goes on from up north, but I, I've never been on that. It's two point two miles, it's two tenths of a mile is all. From the north stop sign down to the, uh, fifty-five mile an hour speed limit sign in this two tenths of a mile stretch. It's two hundred twenty-six feet, which isn't very, uh, far really when you're in a car. And then it goes south to the first sign you see that's rounding yellow and it says railroad. And it's only about this big. Yeah, but it's yellow and I, I don't know who puts that up, maybe the railroad. And then from there, you go south to you hit the, uh, railroad et cross sign, railroad crossing, and beneath that is a yield sign. And after that, just about thirty feet is a stop sign. And actually, the first is a railroad tracks and then the stop sign. Like, uh, the stop signs first really, because you gotta stop with those tracks, I think. Then you hit the shoulder of what we call Cherry Street in, in town here. And, uh, that's, that's concrete, as you know, if you come in from the west, you can keep going and it drops down to sixty-five, up north drops down to fifty-five. For a kid, a young person, shouldn't say kid, from, uh, out of town, who's probably not familiar with these roads, who turns on there and has his friends with him. And, uh, he sees fifty-five, when I was his age, I had punched it. You know, fifty-five.
Woo.
Well, um, suddenly, uh, the car came up to the, uh, railroad crossing sign, the yield sign, the railroad tracks, the stop sign, and went right across the pavement, across the shoulder and down into the, what we call the Yankton Clay Ditch, which is what, ten feet deep, maybe, maybe twelve? And luckily, it was not full of water. I've actually caught northern pike in that ditch uh, in the spring, cause they spawn in there. Don't tell anyone. So, this car went off, off the edge, down into the ditch and hit the other side head on. Four people in it, two, two boys, two girls, one of them was my granddaughter. She was in the backseat. Even though a seatbelt was worn, she hit her head on the, uh, headrest ahead of her. She had a huge bulge on her head for almost a week, had to go to the doctor, she's still seeing a doctor. We don't know who's paying for that. We haven't heard from the parents of the boy who was driving. She has dropped out of all sports because the doctor told her to, she can't even golf. Any golfers here? You know, if not, you probably don't care. She cares, she's in volleyball, basketball, golf. And, uh, she can't do any of that the rest of the summer, probably. It's a dangerous area because of, I think, the signage for a stranger. And for two tenths of a mile, and I don't know, maybe it's a, maybe it's a, a state who puts those signs up or whatever, but how we decided to put fifty-five miles an hour on two tenths of a mile on a gravel road between two highways baffles me, so. You know more about some of this, you've been on calls. I'm sorry, I joined the fire department and rescue squad in nineteen seventy, and I've seen a lot of stuff and a lot of not, not wise things done by drivers. And, uh, and I've helped pick up a lot of patients and I've helped pick up a lot of bodies over the years. I'm old, so I've done a lot of this. I was a medic in the army and I volunteered for the ambulance when I, when I came back to Vermillion, uh, one of the first volunteers, so I missed all the pictures, but I have a face for radio. If you need more, uh, measurements or anything, I took a wheel out there, Rod, and this morning in the humidity and measured, uh, all of, all of that, but it's point two miles, it's, uh, it's dangerous. I've also been, uh, advised, and I didn't really think about this, I should have. Uh, there's apparently a lot of, uh, pedestrian walk out there and bicycle riders out in that area. And this morning, when I was out there, north of Highway fifty, there were two people out walking a dog. Now, I don't know if they came across and went south or not, but, uh, the mosquitoes weren't bad, there's hardly any water where there usually is, but the grasshoppers are gonna be thick. I saw a lot of baby grasshoppers, so. If something could be done about this, it would be very, I, we would be very grateful and especially my granddaughter, who, uh, was gonna enter freshman year. And, uh, I don't know whether she's gonna be involved in sports or not because of this. Uh, as an old rescue guy, I'm just very grateful that she lived and that all of those kids lived. Two of them went to the hospital, one needs all new teeth, one needs a, a broken arm fixed, and, uh, so I, I, first of all, I wanted to say thank you for this time. And I'm very proud of our government and hope, upholding democracy, cause this is where it counts. So, thank you very much.
So, any question?
Yeah.
Or, I just, what, what do you think's a good idea? Lower the speed limit posted? Or stop a head sign?
I'd say you don't even, you don't even need, a stop a head sign would help. I would take the fifty-five down. By the time you get halfway through, why, why go up to fifty-five? That, that's, I don't drive more than forty or forty-five on any gravel road. Uh, it's just not.
I think, um, is it? Like, right, if it's not posted, it's fifty-five.
Well.
Yeah.
Yeah, but for a stretch like that, why post anything? I mean, I don't know, do you have to?
You would prefer to sign to discipline. Yeah, if it didn't post be fifty-five, it sounds like by default, so.
Yeah, but you have to put that up? Like county or state?
Well.
This is not ours.
Yeah, it's a township road and we don't have any control over it.
Well, you're the county commission, of course you do.
No, we don't.
The other thing I'd suggest, Dave, is, is let's say this is that stretch. Uh, on either end, but especially the south end, I would put one of those arrows that says dead end. That road does not keep going south, it stops at the highway. And, uh, and when a car, again, someone from out of town sees, sees a T, they know they're, they better not go straight, yeah, cause in, in the dark of night, they're not gonna see that ditch.
Yeah, so, you know, that's, I think, suggestions we can, we can move forward to the township. I don't think we can put a dead end sign again, because it does, cause that means there's no act.
Right.
Access, we did, we could do a T, but not a dead end.
Well, whatever you wanna do, but keep people from crossing the highway and going south into the ditch. Yeah. Uh, it, it might save some lives, because I'm, I'm, I'm confident this will happen again, especially if somebody's not familiar with it, but. Again, thank you for your time and, uh, thank you for your services as our elected officials. And, uh, and your services too, appreciate it. Yeah, lanes too. Thank you. I have another appointment, so I can't stay. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Uh, Thornton with an E.
Well, it's a township matter for sure.
Who's the chair of that township board?
It's Vermillion, right, Dick?
Yeah, it's Vermillion.
I'd be glad to contact the township board and.
Yeah, just pass on the concern.
Yeah.
Suggestions, let them know that it'll be in the video if they wanna hear the, the discussions.
I did go out and look, you know, I looked at this, uh, ten days after, after this happened, and, uh, and that was a question I had too, was that the, the, for someone that, that's new to driving, especially seeing the fifty-five, the automatic, you wanna drive fifty-five. That and maybe having a stop a head sign rather than that could be better, better signage for that particular spot.
Did you notice south side of what everybody calls Cherry Street? There's not a double arrow there? Or do they knock it down?
I don't think there's a double arrow there.
You turn on the south side of Cherry?
Right.
I was thinking, I was thinking it was.
I looked on Google Maps there.
There is.
There wasn't twenty nineteen.
Okay. I took some pictures while I was out there and I'll take a look in my phone, but I don't, I don't think so.
Twenty nineteen, so. It goes to that's on the state property. That again has nothing to do with.
Yes.
I just thought there was one there.
Any other visitors?
I can't believe I'm just out here.
I didn't hear about it either.
So next up is, um, the, the NSF railroad crossing second.
Another one. Everybody wants something. I don't know, I listened to you guys discuss it a little bit on Zoom. After fact. But, uh, I, I say it's more like eighty feet. Uh, I can't get them pinpointed down. I asked for like an itemized bill of what they're gonna do, but I don't know if you deal with railroad much. But the only time they wanna talk to us is when we're doing something wrong. I agree it needs to be done. We've done it before. And we haven't done it before. The crossing in Mackling, I don't believe we've helped pay for, but that was, got so many phone calls about that, that, um, they did it. We had to do the cut to asphalt so far away from the tracks, so they get the, um, railroad ties out from under it, and we had to go back and put the asphalt back in, of course. They, they don't have any way of doing that, but, uh, I don't know, this is one of the most expensive ones I've had come across my desk. It does need it. But how long do you suppose some concrete pads have been laying there? How long ago did you cut the asphalt?
Been two years.
Two years. So two years ago, they told us they were gonna replace it, never said anything about us. Pan wanted us to cut the asphalt so we could dig it out, which we decided to wait till they got there, which was a good thing. So. They, nobody said anything about wanting any money. I, I wanna see it get done. And of course, it's not gonna be done till next year, two, two, twenty-four, but I definitely didn't have it in my budget.
So why are we having to pay for it?
I don't know, it says here that usually we pay all the costs, which we don't know, I'll put railroad crossings in, we don't have railroad. So I don't know. I tried to, I talked to a few counties and yes, they do it unwillingly. Some of them say they, we don't do it at all, we don't help them out at all, and maybe the crossing never gets fixed or they do come back, but, I mean, I don't know. I'm on the fence either way. But I, I don't wanna make that decision. I don't think it's, we're not, you know, just to be clear, this, the money does not include lights.
And that was gonna be something I was gonna ask you about, because, uh, I, it was strange timing, uh, but I, I had a constituent concern email come in. Uh, I think that, that later in the day that we had heard this initially, just happened to be about that intersection, and I didn't have it, it doesn't, really doesn't seem like it was related to this being on the agenda or anything there. They live down at the, uh, uh, Walk, Walker's Landing, or they have a house down there, and, uh, they said that, um, you know, that the traffic has been more and more traffic down there and going faster and faster, and when the corn's high, you can't see it, and so their, their specific ask was, um, you know, what, what would it take, or do I reach out to the railroad to ask for maybe something a little bit more than just the crossbars, you know, something with a light or a, or a bell ringing and when the train's coming or something like that, so. But that's not, to be clear, that's not a part of this at all, that's a whole other.
That's another, anywhere between a hundred twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a plate.
Wow.
And, uh, you know, when we took over that road back in the nineties, I suppose. It, there used to be nothing there, I mean, crossbooks. And of course, around the yellow one, it was R and R. But, I mean, if you wanted to hit that at thirty, you're airborne, cause you pretty much come up and went over it. Semis could barely cross the green trailers. So, we built up the road on both ends, but I mean, if we went any higher, we'd be, I don't know, hundred fifty feet wide. I, that's why I think it's more sixty-six feet at that railroad, I think it's more like eighty. Maybe even more. I have not, I should've went out and measured it, but I didn't. This Danielle, Dan, Daniella, I asked her for an itemized bill and all she just sends and you know, they put in new track, remove the ties and put those concrete pads down. And anytime you do anything with railroad, it's definitely on their terms, their timeline, they don't care. And that's the part of me that says we go pay.
Right.
But there's wooden ties, cross sections in there. Right at the moment, they aren't that bad. They aren't near like the one Tom was just talking about on Discovery. That is just absolutely terrible there. The railroad crossing, but like you said, there's a lot of people going down there, also gotta look at the safety side of it. So, that's my dilemma. Where to weigh it out.
So, I, I just have a general question, I don't know. Is, isn't that considered the railroad right of way?
Yeah, that's their right of way.
So.
It's, you would.
Their bill.
Yeah.
Cause it says, you know, in their letter, it says that, you know, the road authority, you can tell they're from down south, um, is resp- generally responsible. So that wording that means that they're trying to pull the wool over.
Yeah.
As always, they would state some facts.
And I guess the worst thing they would do is just leave it. You know, I, I was all forward at first, cause I thought they were gonna put lights on it. But no, if we want lights, we gotta pay for them. Which I don't.
Well, and the, and this letter states, you know, we'll give you an estimate after you agree to this.
Right, that's why I tried to get her to give me an itemized bill on. No, she's not gonna do it.
I don't, I would not move forward with that.
I don't, yeah, I mean, to not have an itemized bill, them just saying, well, give us a, a blank check, we'll, we'll do what we think we should, charging.
Right, we know we put in a whole bill.
That's just unpleasant.
A thousand dollars a foot, I think we are footing the whole bill.
Well, that's what I mean.
Talking, uh, in that same camp, uh, sentence, they say roughly half the cost, right? So they're saying it's two thousand foot, which seems like a lot of money to me.
Well, they can say that because they're gonna throw the labor in, that's gonna be their half.
Yeah.
Cause they're gonna lay the track and do everything.
Well, I don't see why we should be responsible for, uh, the rails, the ties, and, uh, tie tamping and all that sort of stuff they do on theirs. Our, our responsibility should be like, see if there's any planking uh, in the, on, on the roadway itself and the approaches and, and they're, they talk about, we'd also provide any asphalt patchwork, if, maybe necessary. On and above, on above that.
We, we provide the asphalt.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's what they're saying.
Plus, before we go in.
Above the thousand bucks.
Right, they're not gonna help with that, they want us to take care of their.
Before we go in to do that, we have to get a permit and do it on their time schedule, cause one of their people have to sit there and watch these guys, even though there might not be a train for three days. But, right, they, that's what they did exactly, or, we're making both. See, and there's another one in Burbank, right north of Wimps, one going north. That one, we might have helped pay for it, that was back when Art was still here. But if I remember, I do, it's a minimal, no, we ain't talking nothing like this. Of course, I never was privy to that anyway, but you know, that's what I said, I'm that's why I brought it up, I was.
I, I don't think it's a reasonable request, actually.
The state doesn't ask us to fix Highway fifty when we go across the university. Yeah, I, uh, so I, I see Michael typing away back there. I, I would not be surprised in the least if the railroads have a ridiculously favorable, entirely unjust legal structure that would dictate that we might actually have some responsibility for this. Is that something that you could look into a little bit? I mean, I, I totally agree with all the justice that has been stated out here, but
I think that.
But we could say, we could say, Michael, a lot of trouble, and we just say, no, we're not paying for it, because if there is a statute, they'll provide it for us.
Yeah.
And then he can take that. Let's work on that.
Yeah. And there's probably no statute on that. There certainly wouldn't be anything when the railroad was built, like great grandfather built that railroad back in eighteen hundreds. Um, from El Point to almost to Vermillion. And, uh,
Just one thing on it too, uh, I don't know if you remember the train derailment that happened at Agop five, six, seven, eight years ago, whatever that was.
Yeah.
When I got on scene, I was told by the railroad that Clay County had absolutely no jurisdiction anywhere around this, and I was, that I need to leave the scene.
Yep.
So, if I can't even sit on Cherry Street and watch them work, I don't personally see how they can expect us to pay for that crossing. Just my, my experience with.
Yeah. And for one summer, I worked on maintenance away, and we, we only did one crossing that I recovered. And it was sending thousand dollars for it, that anywhere near the labor or materials we put in that, other than perhaps the rails. I know those railroad ties were nowhere near that, you know, they're low cost rails, I don't know about, but I wouldn't see how we could be responsible for rails anyway.
Michael, do you have any advice for us here?
I, you know, I'm, there's gonna be, I imagine, some federal law, of course, that, that impacts us here, because it's an interstate system, the railroad track is, so the federal government has just a lot of over and power and authority when it comes to interstate commerce, which is squarely within the realm of railroad, uh, railroad. I would also be baffled to understand how the county is responsible for this, but without doing some pretty deep research. So, would we maybe ask them before flat declining, uh, what their justification is, or, I mean, I, if it needs to get done, and this could save some of the expense of getting it done, and they could just sit on it and say, well, you guys don't like it, we're never gonna do it, um, you know, that, that could be a, a tough situation, but you don't think they'll go that route?
Where does the liability fall? If it doesn't get repaired on them?
Yeah.
Gray area.
Yeah.
But they've repaired other crossings just since I've been on the board, and we've never, they've never asked, they've never.
Yeah.
They've just done them. Because they'll take them out too, without our permission.
Right.
They have already.
Yeah.
Fifty there.
So, I don't know why they're asking for money now.
I, I think, I think we should defer any action on it, uh, for the lack of uh, enough specific information about the nature of the project and cost of the project.
I, I haven't been down there, but how, how bad is that crossing? Is it rough or?
It's, it's oh, normal railroad track.
Yeah, but it's posted at thirty-five too, right? Uh, in that road? Forty-five?
And they put, uh, I was gonna tell Tom that too, that they put the yield signs up on all the crossings now for some reason. So that yield sign that he saw is also on both sides down there on their own poles for the crosswalk, it has a yield sign. Supposedly that just as good as lights, the way they look at it, I guess, but.
When it comes to a lawsuit.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what it is.
So is that a motion then, Dick?
Uh, yeah.
Some.
Do we need to try that again?
Yeah.
You just wanna make the motion to deny the request, leave it at that?
I think we oughta, I, I'd like to make a motion to defer if we deny it, we're, we may be, we may be closing doors that we don't want to. I'd say defer action on, on this request until we have more information on the nature and true costs. Build, build cost of the project.
I, I agree with that totally, but does that communicate anything to them that what we're doing? I mean, is it just gonna sit there? You know, that we don't, we're not responding?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that motion and then we'll discuss it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so we have a motion and a second. I guess my, I mean, it would be that, um, it would make some sense, I think, to put this in writing and, um, you know, we I, I, I don't know if this should be a lawyer letter, um, basically saying. I, I, I don't know if this should be a lawyer letter, um, basically saying, uh, that. You know, no, no, we don't, we don't make these open-ended appropriations.
What's your, what's your thoughts on our mo- my motion, I guess, since you brought that up?
Yeah, yeah, I. But my concern is that there's, I guess, a lot of federal regulations against railroads. Uh, so much of that is gonna be, I imagine, that's gonna be, there may be some simple research I could do to kind of figure out. Where we're at, but I, it's state law is contradictory to federal law, on a federal issue, the federal law is gonna, gonna hold. So even if, if my understanding of state law is that it's federal, if it's a railroad, it's a property, if it's a federal law, that, that isn't. On par with that. I'm not sure if the state law really holds in law, if it's federal. Um, if it's a federal. So. I think right now, we're, I think we're walking, if that's true, uh, before we would do anything, I think it'd be wise to kind of figure out. The way in the land, we could either leave it and just say, come back with us later. Uh, or if we're gonna defer it, um, or approve, I think there's a lot of research, we probably need to go in. I'm not sure why Rod's not giving the information from the capacity strange. Wanting us to. Go along with the. With approval that we're essentially just handing up a blank check, seems.
Right.
Well, I'm sorry.
So what if we just deny it based on lack of information? Leave it at that, they can figure it out.
Well, I, I would feel a lot more comfortable sending a letter that, that we see, you know. We, we, we see the Bravo, um, but we, we can't, cannot act on this without more information. And I, I, I think.
Maybe, maybe I should amend my, my, uh. Motion to say that we deny it pending. The railroad giving us more information on, on the project. Just leave it real open-ended. Yeah.
Well, I think at the minimum, we would need a estimate. Now, they can give us all kind of information.
Well, they, they're, they're doing the, the, give us just bare minimums in their letter. I don't see any reason why we shouldn't reply in kind.
Well, that's, that's what I mean, is it can be very simple, we need an estimation on this cost. Before we can do anything, and, you know, I'm kinda, you know, on, on the side too, is we deny it, let them do the work. And tell us, you know, here's the regulations.
But why are we even contemplating paying for it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's really my question.
And we're setting the precedence.
I mean, my, my question is, are we obligated to pay for this, or are they, I mean, are we obligated to pay for their, their, their track replacement? I don't think so. That, that seems insane, but I, I think we need to know. Um, and I, I agree, we should deny, you know, pending. Um, you know, further information, but I think a piece of that information is what is our obligation. I think we have to know that. Um, I'm, I'm not willing to, uh, lay, you know, pay for a late track. If we're, I mean, it, it seems outrageous that we'd be required to be that outrageous.
And the railroad knows that answer, and I think that goes to what Dave spoke on at the beginning, is they're not providing a single authority, they're just. Making a statement that they're not backing. That seems concerning. They know the answer. They deal with every state and every county in the country. Some of these railroads do, and they know what the lawsuit.
Yeah, and I, and I know that there are railroad lawyers, also, like, who represents parties like us. Um, and they would know the answer, like, you know. Right off the top of their heads, I mean, there are lawyers who spend their lives and make a lot of money. Uh, actually opposing, opposing railroads, I don't know, but. Is there any of those in South Dakota that'd be useful? Supposed to talk to them, but I, 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 I think that's, like, we need the legal answer. Um, you know, before, maybe, even if we have the numbers, we need a legal answer. And I, and I, I suppose we could ask that, say, under what authority are, are you, are you requesting this? So may, maybe that's, maybe that's the lawyer letter, under what authority are you, are you requesting this? And, um, you know, what, what, what is your itemized? Cost estimation.
I, I fully agree with that, but. My thing is, if we just deny it, they're gonna give us that information instead of having our people dig and dig and spend his hours and his time.
Yeah.
So if we just say it's denied, and they come back and say, well, you have to, then we'll know. Next on that.
Yeah, I, I just don't wanna get into like a bureaucratic, we're not talking to you, we're talking to you, so. And that's why I suggested the letter with the two questions. And so, so give them, give them a leading, uh. Uh, give, give them some leads in terms of what we would need in order to approve it.
And, and the letter actually says, B N, B N S F would respectfully ask. The county to contribute one thousand per linear foot.
Yeah.
So, with your permission, I, I think that should modify my.
Yeah.
Motion to say we, we, uh. Deny. This, this payment pending. Uh, no, be- because we don't feel we have adequate financial or. Operational data to act on this, this, uh. Request. I wanna call it a request, which is not a demand.
Yeah. I, I would second that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay.
That sounds good. So we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
Still pretty cumbersome, but.
Yes. Yeah, I think, but, you know, to, to, to Dave's point and Travis's as well, you know, I, I think that, you know, my, my only. My only hesitation on saying a flat denial, and then see what they do, is that. Uh, we may be in a big list of a hundred of these. And if we're just like denied, they're like, okay, fine, we got, you know, this, this crossing isn't. Destroyed yet, and we've got others that we could work on. But, you know, and then, and they might not actually give us any of that information, so I think requesting it more specifically probably is a, is a thing to do, so.
And that's. My question, that's gonna be done by. The state's attorney, correct, so I don't have to.
Yeah.
It's real simple, I think, yeah. Yeah, whatever, you know, of course, whatever you guys want me to do, I'll do it, so.
I, I think it, coming from the state's attorney, no. You'll get it.
You.
They'll, they'll pay a little closer attention, I think.
Should be pretty quick.
This Portland of Florida.
Yeah, I just thought of another wrinkle or two also, is that, I'm not sure that B N S F owns that one, that railroad line. That may still be part of the state railroad system, and they may just be leases. And, uh. Have responsibility for, for maintenance because of the leases. So that could throw another wrinkle into it too. It may not be national law necessarily that, that covers this, the. Uh, railroad authority that Janklow built back in forty years ago, may, may prevail. Lane?
Everything I get is, it indicates that it's in one.
It's their line?
Yeah, like Asprey O and stuff like that, it's all. It all comes over.
Okay.
Makes it easier. Any further discussion?
Read that motion out loud, that, to me, again. Yeah.
Um, so I, these are just my notes, Carrie probably has better notes.
What is the actual motion? That's what I wanna know.
Um, so I have. That the motion was amended to deny the request pending the railroad providing more. Information about the cost and the scope of work. Does that cover it?
That's what I meant.
Well, and I, I think I need the authority for.
The cost, the scope of work, and the authority.
Or, okay. For the request.
So beyond the authority, you know, do you want me to improve in this letter?
No, I think simpler the better.
Yep. Yep, I definitely agree with that.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. See, building of a parking lot right here is with a four H.
Yeah, we didn't know how you wanted to handle this, we. Did a repair to the entrance up there where it was all broke out. And the guys went up, dug it out. Relieved the asphalt. Um, I don't know. I can't remember, did I send you a copy of the bill? Yeah. Forty-nine eighty-nine?
Yeah.
So, seems how, seems like. Comes out of same pocket sooner or later. I didn't know if. You wanted us to bill that to them, the whole price, materials only. Without the labor, we weren't sure. How you wanted that. No, cuz I'm sure they don't probably have it in their budget.
Yeah, they've got a pretty small budget.
And I mean, in the scheme of things on my side, it's. Pretty small amount, but I mean, it's still. Some. You know, when we worked for the park board, I, not for sure, I don't remember if we. Charged labor when we built the pants, we didn't, we just put the. They just paid for the materials.
Yeah, I think that's the case.
So I didn't know, that's the way you wanted to do it, or.
So what is the material cost? The nineteen seventy-five?
Sounds pretty. It's like in twelve hundred and sixty-eight.
Twelve sixty-eight, yeah.
Okay.
And. Imagine I can. Abord that too, if you don't. Mean it's like Peter Pan pull kind of thing.
Kinda, but not really. It'd be simpler if we could just run it the same way we do the parks. I mean, there, we do fund the park and we do fund four H, so. We make them pay for their materials. It's, it's just easier for, to keep track of that way for me, anyway.
Yeah.
If we treat everybody the same.
That we're just costing materials, that's fine with everybody. I, I, I'm fine with that too, that's.
We need to move that. Have a motion?
Yeah, we're gonna have to, so move to. Move to bill them for the twelve hundred and sixty dollars for materials.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
But, oh, can I add one thing to that?
Yeah.
If this ever happens again, Rod, if, if somebody could come in beforehand. And let us know that. These projects are being done, just so we know, just so everybody knows where the cost is supposed to go.
Yeah, we, at the time, didn't really. I, I kind of told Scott it'd probably be under five thousand dollars, it got closer than I thought, but.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we just met Scott out there, I guess, so.
Alright.
From now on, we'll get approval before we do it.
It'd be best on stuff like that.
Right.
Especially when, when it comes to outside stuff. I mean, Scott's got the authority to go into the buildings and. Or the four H center building to do repairs, that's not a. Prior approval, but anything outside, we're gonna have to do something. If that's okay with the rest of the board.
Yeah, that seems like a good, good and reasonable.
Yes.
So we've got a couple of bridges.
Yeah, they, they must have came to Carrie.
Yeah, they did, I'm not sure why.
I, I should print them, I read through them, but I don't believe there was anything in there to sign, was it?
Yeah, there was, yeah. Which is okay, I can have Betty sign and then take care of getting them there.
What they're asking for. Was. If we're gonna have anything on the bridge in the big program, correct?
Yeah, there's two, two structures.
Oh, so this is. For the.
Once we've already identified.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So these were, we got letters and.
Yeah, I was thinking, where is it?
Well, I, I think we, uh, we, we signed off on, uh, the application. But now we've gotten a letter of grant, and they want us to sign off on amounts, and it's like four. One structure was seven hundred and twenty-three thousand one hundred. Um, plus eighty percent of engineering costs, and for the other, it was four hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred plus eighty percent. So if that's, if that's not reasonable to you.
Yep, that, that's what I saw too, but I thought we already. I thought we already signed those.
Well, this is.
There are so many steps to this, first time I went through it too, so. Sorry, I'm kind of behind on that part two.
Yeah, this, 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 they, they seem to, I think they want us to sign it because it, it contains all the rules, all the rules of the program.
Right.
And the steps they want us to go through, it has copies of the reporting. Um, documents that they want, and they want us to agree that, yes, we're gonna file all those documents.
Cuz they always say there's nothing free. And that is eighty-twenty split, we, we have the twenty percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as you're talking about that, just quickly, they ask for. Bridges coming up. Cuz they have to be in by the first August, is our next meeting the first August?
Mm-huh.
So I, I have a map. And we have nothing that I don't wanna spend money on, but. We have till the end of the business day on the first. I didn't get that till yesterday afternoon, so I will have that on the next agenda. Just make sure you all agree with me. It's pretty self-evident, but. I don't wanna, this is a little different. Procedure, so I'll make sure. I just. Sign it off and not let you know, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of details of this thing, yeah. Including a thank you sign in perpetuity, so, yep.
Yeah, I see.
Which, which bridges is?
Uh, it's one on, uh. You know, on University Road where, um. Earl and Olson just built a new house, it's the bridge south of there.
Okay.
They're doing the, just the deck, they're not replacing it, the river bridge west around Yacht.
Okay.
So, one's a low slump, one's a same. Uh, they called a epoxy chip seal like we did on, uh. Dakota Street Bridge over the river here a couple of years ago.
Okay.
So, we need a motion to approve, um, the, uh, official agreements.
So, second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I have a question, did you say you were gonna? Contact Vermillion Township?
Yes.
So I'll, I'll stay out of it for now.
Do you know who the chair is?
I can get that for you, Betty.
Okay, that'd be great.
We have it on our website, so I can grab that for you.
Okay.
That's super. Thank you.
Yeah, when you're done here.
So.
Fun part begins.
Uh.
I'll step out of the room.
Somebody grab him.
We've got the highway department budget, it's page seventy-one.
Four.
No, there's no.
One, one line on it, or, you know, they.
That is the.
Work on these.
Yeah, that's the trick on those, uh, media app is hyperlinked, so you can click on it and see the page.
Very requested that. Budgets that we turned in. The first time be, see what we could do about taking ten percent off, so. I believe I came pretty close. I'm basically on the machinery line.
So you took the snow blower off, what else came off?
No, I didn't take the snow blower off, we took the. Low boy.
Yeah.
And the, and the snow blower, we downsized. From one with the stealth obtained. Motor like what we have to hydraulic one, so it's easier. For transporting and we can use it between loaders. We don't have to have one loader specific. And there. Lot of counties went to them. They're pretty good, so. But. Through the price also. When you get one with motor on it, you're looking. Pretty close to two hundred and fifty thousand. Depending on size and. You know, width that way. Um, but the only thing we have down is a snow blower, um, hot box. We have a homemade hot box. Which we have to buy cold mix. This is a reclamer. So we can. Use our old asphalt. Um, that we had milled up. You can heat that up and use it, so we don't have to buy cold mix anymore. We borrowed Turner Counties, I think, half a dozen times. Where it's excellent. And still have. So we we got two different pickups this year, a brand new one, as you know, and a huge one. But. The one that we weren't planning on getting rid of. Didn't really blow the engine up, but blew head gasket, so. I mean, there are three quarter ton, well, one ton, right? One ton pickups. But they were purchased with three fifty gas motors in them. You pull anything behind it with a water tank on it and you're. They're just too light duty.
Yeah.
So we need to keep. And that's what a ninety, ninety seven?
Yeah.
We have a ninety nine or two thousand. What's the Dodge? Well, that's Dennis. So we still got. Some old trucks, and I always look check federal surplus. You know, because every once in a while you get find something. That we can get by with, but there's just sometimes you gotta. And it's just ridiculous. You gotta pay seventy five thousand dollars for a pickup. I mean, two years ago, he has a one ton. And it was thirty four thousand. And we got it the same year. Yours is three fifty. And even that's when you start hauling mini excavator. Skid loaders are bigger. That's still. What's a burden on, not far, as far as motor, but the suspension. So. Now, the rest of it, I pretty much left alone, the rest of my budget. Um. Just hate to see. I think we're getting ahead of the game a little bit maybe with the micro servicing. Um, next year is not quite so much micro servicing, but we gotta go back. And do some chip sealing now to the roads. That aren't. Good enough, and then. And we've, we got three oh six. Lumin over our heads, which nothing. Will be done with that next year, but I want to get some of this other stuff. Caught up before we have to. Completely stop everything. Which we've been kind of working for eighteen years, trying to get caught up for the lack of what didn't get done before. And kind of see light at the end of the tunnel, but I realize I got. The lion's share of whatever the total budget is, so. And I know things are tight, so I guess. I'm open for suggestions. Other than. I don't know, what did it might come like nine point seven percent? Was it quite ten percent, was it?
It was pretty darn close.
I think it was.
Yeah, well, thank you. Thank you for that. I mean, I I really appreciate your thoughtful ones, which you approach. Um, to the conventions, so.
You have the breakdown sheets, right, for like our, what we plan on for materials?
Yeah.
Out of that. The miles and cordless asphalt jumped up about twelve bucks. A ton just from last year, right? To even see what's gonna be like next year.
So under the twenty twenty four budget machinery request page, um, shouldn't that be two sixty five instead of two seventy five?
Two seventy five is what I have. Did I?
Because if you, if you're taking the hundred and twenty thousand dollar lowboy off there, right?
Hundred nineteen, yeah.
So we've got a hundred and ten thousand for a snow blower, eighty thousand for the hot box.
No.
No.
So.
No.
I have.
Removing the snow blower, but keeping the.
No, he's, he's using, he's keeping the snow blower.
I did, I did not give you an updated sheet.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
This is what I have. Um. And that don't come out, right? Larry, how are we gonna come over? I just added that up yesterday. You have two seventy five on that? Thirty three, two thirty three. I could have drawn sheet. I have two thirty three on this. This one.
Okay, so what are we?
But.
You're still getting the hydraulic snow blower, right?
Correct. That's, that's the list of the price. As, you know, this year.
Okay, so Carrie, you still got the two seventy five in the budget line?
I'll fix that.
I don't think I passed that on to her either.
Okay, yeah, that's a big.
Apologize.
What's he got for numbers on this?
So thirty three then total.
Seventy eight thousand for the snow blower instead of the one ten.
Okay.
And then. I think the other. Hot box and floor.
That's good.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for that.
So. We have that.
I can, yeah, I can update it.
I made a note here.
Okay.
Hey, two seventy five on the machinery. Line and that comes up to three thirty three, huh?
This is two thirty three. The real, the real revised number is two thirty three.
Is that right?
Sure looks it.
That's right, but I don't understand how I got the.
The the snow blower is is down to seventy eight K, not one ten, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then what?
Well, it's better this way than the other way.
There you are, yeah.
The numbers transformed.
Right, there's another. Thirty thousand, forty thousand, but.
Yep.
Thirty thousand here and thirty thousand there, it adds up.
Yep.
So we changed them after we turned these in. Good. So the updated number on that line for the machinery should be two thirty three, whatever. Even. I hate this. I am not afraid to say it, this. This is the worst part of this job. I don't care if it only comes once a year. Are you sure?
Yes.
Yes, it is, seriously. I might say something different later on.
I might agree with you, Rod.
Don't do not interview you a bit. Promise you.
I I was gonna bring up walking through deep ditches marking trees.
Oh, that was fun though.
Fresh air.
You know, I still have your.
Fresh air.
I still have your can of dick spray at my passenger door too.
Use it up, use it up.
Any other questions? Um. On the, on the. Um, we haven't done chip sealing for quite a while. I kind of took a stick stab at that. I've heard. Thirty five thousand. A mile this year. I put down thirty. Last time we did it was like. Twenty one. But we haven't done a chip sealing for since eighteen, I believe. First year we started micro servicing here in nineteen, right around there. And I do have the two decks that we just discussed in there.
Got those big grants for help.
And one removal bridge. Uh, the one east of, uh. Oh, for lack of better words, east of the hippies, over the river, three fourteen.
Right.
What was the way you coming down to bike in Berkeley next year, so. I have not heard any more about that, so.
What's the scoop with your salaries going down about fifty five thousand?
The what?
Salaries?
Well, I increased.
No. It's now.
Yeah, it's about.
Well, we are one, we are one guy short. Um, we're gonna discuss that a little later. I'm kind of went through and I don't think I added any overtime this year either. I usually put a little overtime in on each on those lines. To keep it kind of tight. Unless we get a ungodly moment of snow, even last year, we didn't have much overtime.
What what date are the year to date numbers, uh, through again?
The end of April.
End of April.
Portland's comp is.
It's always kind of just a.
Yeah.
Projection.
It goes up and down.
Yeah.
We have.
And it did, it did go up a little bit, just in the. There was one of those, um, not the modifier, but there was one of those credits that wasn't quite as much.
We had a couple of bad years. Shoulder. And what else? Two shoulder. At work, so that didn't help the.
It's been going back down though. It's just that the.
Yeah.
The credits aren't quite as.
It goes up and hurries, but it takes a while to go back down.
Yep.
Well, thank you. Didn't really, yeah, you really did a good job. Appreciate it. This is. This is a rough, rough year.
Yeah, I understand you. Get good over the years, so I'm not complaining one way or the other. Uh, but I am on for executive session at the end. So I'll stick around.
You don't need executive session to stay for another ten years, Rod.
Wait until you see. Yeah, I see you go sit and pull me back, so. Yeah, I'll discuss that later.
Okay.
Who's Spanish?
We skipped lane, didn't we?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it's so. Um, Lane, um, part of the admin report. Easy as usual.
Yeah, just that time for the quarterly quarterly report signatures again to send into the state, this proves that I'm. Doing something for the reimbursement from L E M P G money, so. I guess it's all pretty much self explanatory, but I'll answer any questions you have.
I'll move to approve the chairman to sign.
I'd second.
Motion and a second.
Thanks for all the stuff you're doing.
Uh, again, it's widget counting and you can't put everything in there because if they deem it not emergency management, it may tick it. Maybe it tick against you. It's ridiculous and it's only gonna get worse, just saying.
Looks good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, I just need the signatures, Carrie, from you and Betty, so I can get it.
Send it to you.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. So we've got a motion to approve at a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So I'm gonna sign that. I'm Dr. Sanders. Thank you for your patience.
Oh, thank you for having me.
I bet you wish you could come on.
Aye. Yeah. Sometimes I wonder how you guys do it, to be honest with you, but. So, um, this is my twenty eighth year, um, coming in front of the commission. I don't know, are you guys part of District Three Planning?
No, no.
Okay, so in some of the counties, Greg Henderson, if you know Greg, has been, um, coming for me. And, uh, he's been doing this for, I think, forty years, so. That makes me feel better than than Greg appears before me, but. Um. Two things today. First one, I always share our numbers with you. And I do that as a way to get right and hopefully understand a little bit about what we do. Our numbers are up a little bit again this year, um, that. And as I look at the number, this is for last calendar year, and when I look at our numbers for the first half of this fiscal year. Um, some of the numbers, particularly on crisis care, are significantly higher than what these will be and and they're projected. They're probably, um, double, um, this next. The next year that I report to you, but. Um, our numbers are up a little bit in terms of of most areas outpatient and all services or just kind of our routine services. That we provide, the substance use treatment is outpatient substance use treatment. S E D services are services that we provide to kids. We're in every school and every, um, county. Um, that we serve, so we're in, we're in, um. Um, providing school based services, um, psychosocial rehab services. I I describe these as services to individuals that when I started in this business. Uh, we're all at the Human Services Center. They're individuals who have severe mental illness, they're living in the community, our case managers, um, follow up, make sure they're getting medications, doing whatever they need to do. To help them be successful in the, in the community. Residential substance use inpatient treatment is thirty day inpatient substance use program. Uh, our residential crisis stabilization is really an alternative to inpatient hospitalization. And, um, that's the the second thing that I want to talk to you about. And then our crisis contacts, the crisis contacts that we're talking about are crisis contacts that require a face to face. Um, response to that individual at the time. Um, a significant portion of those are petitions, individuals who have been petitioned because. There's an allegation that they're have been a danger to themselves or others. The big thing that I want to talk to you about this year is that, when I've talked to you in past years, that we opened crisis beds, um. In twenty twenty in response to the tornado and that hit Sioux Falls, because they're just funding inpatient beds. We had to have some kind of alternative. That since then, we've been developing really our crisis services. That. Um, some of it had was influenced by the pandemic. Um, one of the underlying, um. Uh, issues is that we learned that emergency departments really aren't, isn't the best place to deal with behavioral crises. So part of of what we're doing, and this is in conjunction with an initiative by the state of South Dakota. Is that we're recreating, creating a receiving center, we're adding four additional beds. The idea will be that family members, law enforcement, whoever, can just bring people over, willing them. The medical, um, evaluation to make sure that they're medically stable, if they need to have, um, uh. Uh, Q M H P evaluation for certification evaluation, if they're there, there because of petition. We'll do that, try to stabilize them, and then if we can stabilize them, we'll get them onto the inpatient, um, hospital. The the big thing for the, for the counties is that, um, the state is funding us to do. To do that for you. Um, and in the past, counties have always been responsible for free. Pre-commitment hearing costs, so, um, and in normal circumstance, you might have the cost of somebody going to an E D. And I don't know what you're getting charged when somebody goes to the emergency department and the certification evaluation is done there. But probably a thousand dollars or more for an E D visit, that gets done. That you're gonna have, if they want to McKenna Hospital, you're gonna have the cost of, you guys know what you're paying for McKenna per day? Right now, pre-commitment hearing.
I don't, I don't. Probably.
Have to be for five, six, seven, or eight days. Um, if they have a hearing, then you're gonna pay for the hearing, which, you know, can be another probably, um, two thousand dollars. So the, the big thing that I'm helping counties understand is that, you know, we're not gonna always avoid those costs. Some kind of people do need to go to the E Ds. Um, certainly sometimes they'll need to go on to an inpatient hospitalization. But many of the costs that counties have been responsible for in the past can be avoided, so. You know, you're talking about each one of those crisis bed stays, maybe diverting eight, ten thousand dollars. Um, each time for, for the company. Um, it's, it's something that the state should have done a long time ago. The, the whole concept is regionalizing crisis care. And it, and it makes sense when you think about it, people having to come down to the Human Services Center from Aberdeen or Rapid City. There's a, there's actually a prison bus that transport people who are mentally ill across the state from Rapid City, so. The idea is to regionalize crisis care, Yangton is one of those centers. We're in the process of building a brand new facility that will be up and running in probably about eighteen months, but in the meantime. We're leasing space in the old hospital, in the Benedictine Center, but we'll run the receiving center and have beds before we can get out there. Probably the biggest thing that's happened in my career, my, in, in behavioral health in South Dakota, so. Questions? I mean, I'm here to ask for your continued support or asking our counties for eight percent, um. Increase over what you provided last year and for you guys, your contribution. Right now is twenty four thousand point seventy eight, and we're asking for twenty six, four, three, six. Um, forty one, so.
Just a, a note for the commission, I wasn't sure what the percentage was gonna be when I calculated the budget, so I figured in three percent. Um, and the budget lines that you're looking at are, uh, the mental health and the drug abuse. They're right next to each other, one right after the other there. The drug abuse also, um, includes our committal contract.
Okay.
So.
So we, we paid twenty eight thousand seven something last year.
Yeah, I think you pay some other money for.
We do for the middle contract out of that, yep.
The middle contract, which, um, again, as the receiving center gets going, that probably should be. Plus your middle contract because we can do, um, some of those as well. The other thing to understand, but it's really important, um, and the state has accepted this. Is that we're trading a behavioral health crisis regardless of whether it's substance use related or mental health, the same. So we're not creating silos in terms of, you, you know, you have to go here if it's, uh, related behavioral health crisis related substance use. Versus, um, mental illness, which only makes sense in communities our size, because we can't build infrastructure for, for both, so. Um, so that's, that's huge because counties traditionally have been responsible for the E C O S in, in particular, so. Questions? The, the amount that the counties fund this is a very small part of their budget, but it helps us leverage state dollars, and this is a good example of how. How we've been able to do that, so. Questions? You guys have some questions? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your support. Thank you.
I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, uh, county, uh, welfare request for a funeral, uh, this was a couple that was in the nursing home, me and Irene. Passed away. Really early this year, we're just finally getting the paperwork, so.
Irene or Rukanda?
Irene. Sunset banner.
That isn't like county, isn't it?
So this is a request for human assistance, you know, the three thousand two hundred ninety dollars.
Yeah, what are that? I didn't do the math, nineteen hundred times two minus five hundred and two.
Is there a motion to approve?
So.
Second.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Thank you.
Right.
Let me know when you're all ready.
Forty-two.
Forty-two.
Okay. So I won't really go over the salaries and everything that goes into that, most of those numbers again were generated by Carrie, but I can. Certainly speak to whatever is necessary. I know there's gonna be bump ups and some of the pay throughout the year, of course, with steps, but that's not, uh, abnormal. You guys are well familiar with all of that. Um, the professional services fees, the, the bar dues I have there, uh, trying to go back and just tighten things up a little bit. I called the state of South Dakota, that is the number, it's gonna come in a little lower this year. How South Dakota, uh, does that is for the first four years, you're admitted to the bar, the bar dues are a little cheaper. So what I did was I just took what it would cost, uh, for three attorneys, all being at the five-year plus mark, just to keep it simple. That's a number that she doesn't think, the state doesn't believe is gonna change going into twenty twenty-four, that should be that sixteen twenty. It will come in a little lower than that, but I figure rather than trying to readjust that every single year, of course, we never wanna speak of it, but. You know, sometimes turnover happens and you think you're gonna have somebody who's less experienced, and then there's somebody that is more experienced. Um, so that's that number that should be, like, that should be hitting it right on the head, uh, that sixteen twenty. Um. And the only other thing that changed in the professional services and fees was there was a, originally a five hundred dollar budget request. For what's listed as N D A A dues, that's the National District Attorney Association dues prior to twenty twenty. Four, uh, so every year, including this year, the state's, the South Dakota State's Attorney Association has paid those dues for every county. They are going away from that, I think everybody's budget is getting so tight that they were just trying to find a way that they could, um. Could, could save themselves a little bit as well, so they said, well, some counties aren't using the N D A A as much as others. Let's just put it back on the counties and they can decide if they wanna utilize it. I went back and forth on this, Lexi advocated to keep it when her and I spoke, uh, recently. It's a good program, it provides some resources, I wish it provided more like web-based trainings. It does, you know, some, it does provide some of that opportunity, but it's all cost-based and it's pretty minimal in my, um, opinion. The big thing that the N D A A does is it does provide resources, uh, albeit, you know, they're, they're pretty generic. But there are resources on trial techniques as well as, you know, pro, best ways to prosecute different types of crimes from crimes against women, sexual assaults. Um, animal abuse, some of those more important but less practiced areas of law, uh, are particularly helpful. So I'm not necessarily saying I want, I talked to Caitlin and Sam, they said that they haven't utilized it in any great. Amount, um, in past years, but I think it's something that we would utilize more if we maybe knew that it was there. Um, I know that they knew it was there, but we weren't paying for it, so perhaps the fact that we weren't utilizing, we weren't utilizing it. May be attributed to the fact that we really weren't responsible for the financial aspect of it. I've done some research, I don't know if I, I think we can go through. I feel comfortable not requesting it in the twenty twenty-four budget, understanding that I'll likely ask for it in future years beyond this year. It's probably gonna be about five hundred dollars a year, um, if we get into some strange, uh, cases in twenty twenty-four. I may re-approach the commission and say this is something I'd like to reconsider, um, you know, putting the membership in place again. But from speaking with Sam and Caitlin, again, it hasn't been utilized heavily, so right now I'd feel comfortable keeping it off the budget in twenty twenty-three. I just wanna make it known, I may come back and say I take that back. Um. There, I have a line in here for repairs from when I spoke to Alexis, she had indicated most of that. Stuff that, well, all of it is no longer included in the specific state's attorney's budget anymore, but it just has never been removed. Um, there was that three-year average that still existed, and I just didn't wanna eliminate it, even though it's zeroed out. The big increase is gonna be supplies and materials. Um. I think this is on par with what we're gonna need, I mean, we're, I've looked at, you know, with the last three-year average, we've been at thirty-six twenty. This, even with the increases here, we're at forty-one fifty, but it's only, the actual request is just for four thousand. Hopefully we can find some money there specifically, like to file accessories and files. The one thing that does concern me is postage, I didn't account for any increase in postage, but I think it's, we've talked just recently about there being another increase in postage. Again. Um. You know, this, this does contemplate a thousand dollar increase, but it appears that we've been over, uh, over budget in that area. So I'm hopeful that that four thousand dollars will be enough. Realistically, that may not be, it's gonna be close, I mean, I don't think we're gonna come in any lower than right around four thousand dollars with the increase in paper. Um, and just file accessories and files, uh, Linda, the, uh, who's obviously. A big part of the state's attorney's office, she's been here a long time for me, she, uh, she, she does all the filing, she has everything filed very specifically. You know, we're not paperless, um, that's something that eventually is gonna have to happen, that's gonna be an expensive day, uh, but. Uh, you know, keeping, keeping actual files is also expensive, which is what you're seeing here with the files and file accessory costs of. About sixteen hundred dollars for next year. And then travel, uh, this includes training and registration. You know, this year, Sam and I just went to that sexual assault training at U S D, that was last week. Uh, it was a really good training, the, we were fortunate enough as the county that we only had to pay for one of the two registration costs. It was eight hundred and fifty dollars, each registration cost was, um, you know, that's. Gonna kind of be where it's at, if we're wanting to do anything beyond the three days that the state's attorney conference is out in Deadwood every year. That's what, we do that every single year, um, but anything beyond that is gonna cost us that eight hundred to a thousand dollars. That's just kinda, that, for a week training, that's just gonna be what it is. Uh, South Dakota is the only state, I believe that's still true, in the country that doesn't require attorneys. To have a certain number of continuing education hours per year, or every, every other year, or whatever states do different requirements. South Dakota doesn't have one, there are attorneys practicing in the state who haven't taken a course in anything since law school in thirty years. Um, that's a big concern and a big problem. Of course, for budgeting consideration, it's nice because there is no actual requirement that we go through some training. Uh, but it certainly is best practice that we have adequate training. Here, what I've done is, is increase the training registration fee to a thousand dollars. That should, in theory, allow us to send one attorney to like a week-long training or a couple attorneys to a couple different, uh, couple-day trainings. Um, you know, likely would keep those regional Sioux Falls, obviously Vermillion is preferred, but, uh, there is like, uh. A conference in October that has to do with sexual assault, uh, that takes place in Sioux Falls, they do that every year. That's a nice one for us because we can get up there and back in the day without having a ton of, um, hotel expenses. Or, uh, travel expenses. But I do think it's important to increase that, uh, the training registration fee, I mean, we need to ensure that the attorneys in the office. And even hopefully, uh, the Linda and Victoria, who also act as, as some victim, uh, assistants, can get some proper training on, on, on that as well. If we can find something that, that, that meets our needs as far as budgeting, we would like to do that. Otherwise, I think everything else was really just considered cost of living increases as far as, uh, training. Mileage reimbursement up a little bit from, uh, last year, same with like case mileage and professional meeting mileage. Those just being meetings that we may need to go have out in the community with folks, rather than who, who can't come into the office if we need to, to go meet them somewhere. Um, we haven't had to do that yet since I've been here, but from time to time, those, those opportunities are gonna come up and we have to take advantage of them. Rather than avoiding meeting with folks that need to meet with those victims or witnesses. And then. Same with, I think, the utilities and, and office maintenance, that was contemplated under the phones, which I know now the phones are all under a different system, so that's zeroed out. But that's not currently zeroed out, and I, I believe I'm comfortable zeroing it out, I'm not sure if the commission can think of any reason why it can't. Uh, again, when Alexis and I spoke, she had left the two thousand dollars in the twenty twenty-four budget when her and I discussed the reason for that. She said it was, uh, just ensuring that there wasn't gonna be a phone cost, uh, specific to department heads. I believe that must have been how it used to happen, now it's all been under one system.
We do still split it out by department according to how many phones you have.
Okay.
So there will still be some of that there. Um.
Okay. And so, and maybe I just need to discuss with you to make sure that that two thousand is, is kind of where I need to be at. Um. And then other than that, I think the only other. Everything else really was books, is the only thing we pay for is Dakota disc, that's something, that's a resource that is state-provided that I. I believe is extremely necessary as far as the operation of the office goes, that's something that we just need to be current with. It provides up-to-date legislation and the reasons why legislators have, um, enacted different laws or, or chose to, to, to move them down the road. But it keeps us kind of in the know and ahead of the game as far as what's to come, uh, each year in July when laws get implemented. And then equipment, I was actually able to take five hundred dollars out of last year's budget, uh, that was kind of my, probably where I was able to pull the most. Uh, from the office has, is, if you've been in the state's attorney's office recently, you'll see, I mean, we all have newer desks now. Uh, there's been a lot that has been improved in the office, which I'm very grateful for, but now I think we're in a position where we can kind of. Uh, reduce some of the, uh, some of the costs as it relates to, um. Filing cabinets, I, I zeroed that one out, that was originally a request, but I talked to Linda, we feel comfortable, especially with all the work that's gonna be done now that we know how encompassing it's gonna be next year. I, we're not, you know, we're not gonna be asking for new filing cabinets to try to add additional, um, storage at this point. I think she feels comfortable, we can operate with what we have, and the last thing I wanna do is have to keep moving things around while that HVAC and fire suppressant has taken place anyway. Um, but that's kind of where it's adding most, for the most part, the equipment's in a good spot. I did contemplate, uh, a computer, we have three laptop computers in the office, uh, and, you know, talking to Eric since they. You know, it's about three-year life, mine, the one that I'm using right now is the oldest one, and it's on its last legs, I'm gonna nurse it to the twenty twenty-four, hopefully. But then I, it's, it's gonna be time, so I think the three-year cycle is about on par. Um, and I talked to Eric since that's kind of a quote from them, they're hoping it'd be near seventeen hundred dollars, so. But.
Just going back to that phone system, a thousand sixty a year should cover.
Okay. So I honestly could even reduce that a little more, that, from that phone's line, it could be reduced down to fifteen hundred or wherever you feel comfortable. If that's a solid number, a thousand sixty, I can pretty much cut that in half. Okay, alright.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Morning.
Good morning.
Okay, I had no real big changes in my budget, except for, as you can see, my professional services line. I did increase, that is due to postage, that dreaded postage. But um our postage is uh, it generates income. You know, we're above, we're ahead of ourselves right now this year, so um I feel fine knowing we're gonna recoup all of those expenses for that. Uh, my only other change was just a little bit, and that was my supplies and materials. And this year, every county was surprised in the fact that years ago, we had gone to a special license plate mailing envelope that the state provide, we thought provided for us. And um come to find out that they were supposed to be charging us, and they didn't, you know, back charge us or anything. But for a shipment, it's four hundred dollars, and I project each year, we're gonna be about three to four shipments. So that's an extra twelve to sixteen hundred dollars that we have not been spending in the past that we will be spending now in the future. Other than that, I could say everything, I kind of kept the same. I don't foresee anything possibly, a new computer, I'm not only gonna replace them when I have to. But this year I had a surprise, and now I'm replacing one currently. I had one that just kind of went kaput on us.
So what falls under data processing then? Cause that one's doubled, so.
That is our software fees for T-Tech, you know, our yearly contract. And then we're still um paying software services for cert, you know, certain services. So yes, that did double. I kind of forgot about that. Due to, we're still paying two contracts.
That get better next year?
We're hoping so.
Hope so.
Yeah, we both, Kerry and I, were both a little surprised.
We weren't. Well, I think last year when we prepared our, our budget request, we both kind of forgot that we were gonna be paying two and really just budgeted for one of those companies. And so this year it does look like more.
But the line uh professional and services and fees, you know, had like a three-year average of twelve hundred and then a twenty, twenty-three budget of fifty thousand and a twenty, twenty-four seventy-five thousand. And, and then, and then I'm looking at the supplies and materials and then uh, you know, three-year average of thirty-eight thousand and then drops to about twenty-one hundred with the twenty twenty-four. So is that, i- is there something switched between those? Is that what you're saying with the postage? So it was sitting in the other one, and then it moved into that one?
Yeah, yeah, I changed the service, the, the lines when we started, you know, pre-start, started doing our mail instead of us using our meter that we had in office. So that, that, I just switched the two.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? I had, let me see, there was one thing in my professional services too, next year projected. Um, you know, we, we um pay for title searches for tax deed. And um at this point, I have eight next year. I'm hoping that my notifications that I send out in the next few months will help minimize that number, but you know, that's hundred and six dollars and fifty cents times eight, so that's included in there as well. Those are recouped fees.
Yeah.
As well, but still you gotta spend it first. Even my fingers crossed on the computers. But yeah, we're, we're, we're very minimal in our office. We, we try to squeak by as best we can, so.
Questions?
Up for me.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
We did that voucher, really.
I, I do need a minute. I didn't get them. Initially get them opened, but uh it was as far as I can.
Um, just real briefly, uh, the park board did meet last Thursday. Um, I shared with them everything that we had discussed at our last meeting, so um they're gonna, gonna proceed. Um, the one, one ask that they had was whether uh the state's attorney's office would be comfortable drafting a just really generic, we quit the contract uh letter, just uh, so, so I know we need to get a cer- certified letter to them, and they asked whether that's something that, um, that you guys would be able to do easily.
So.
No, since we don't have a contract.
What I'd like to do is have uh, if we can go to the executive session, that's how I want you to discuss uh contracting and like leasing. That will lease, say like last time we discussed, as a kind of certificate for the state, the statute. So maybe you can discuss.
That sounds good, yep.
All right, um, any building project updates?
Nothing right now.
Okay, uh, any joint jurisdiction?
We're gonna meet Thursday night.
Um, then I would enter.
We've got provisional budget, Kerry.
Oh, provisional budget. Yeah. Um, so we just need a motion to adopt the provisional budget. And um, and then from there, we continue with budget hearings. And then the final budget gets adopted at the last Tuesday in September. So.
So I'll move to approve the provisional budget.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the provisional budget um in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So executive session.
Move to going to executive sessions for personnel and contractual.
Second.
Move the motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion to end the executive session?
Motion to come out of executive session.
Right.
The motion in a second to come out of the executive session, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is there any further business to come to rest? Is there a motion to return?
So moved, second.
Motion to, and turn second, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.